We'll go ahead and call the meeting in order, who will open with prayer.
If you would, bow your heads with me, please. Most gracious heavenly father, we thank you, Lord, for this day. God, we thank you for your love, your mercy, and your grace. Lord, we thank you for this great county, and we pray that you'd bless the meeting today. Let the decisions be honorable in your sight, and, Lord, be with everyone during this upcoming holiday season. And let us experience you, and pray these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, that brings us to amendments to the agenda. Mr. Compass?
I don't have any.
Mr. Morris?
I don't have any.
Mr. Taylor?
I have none.
I have none. Mr. Bossarge?
None.
Chancery clerk?
None.
County administrator?
No.
Road manager? Board attorney?
Yes, I have four under regular session department heads, under human resources. I want to amend, just to substitute the agreement that was in the civic clerk. It's identical agreement, but this one is signed. We did get a signed agreement back with regard to the Verus RX PBM contract. No changes, just a signed agreement. Under planning, regular session, under planning, department heads, I would like to amend to discuss greater Gulf development. Under regular session, board attorney, I would like to amend to discuss the election commission vacancies. And under executive session, I would like to add an item dealing with election commission personnel matters as it relates to the county.
All right, any other amendments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, I have an amendment under the agenda, human resources. I just have an updated employee information packet that passed out to you.
All right, any others? Motion to accept the amendments as presented.
I move.
Motion by Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings general public comment. Is anybody here for general public comment? All right, anybody here for general public comment? All right, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended? Got a motion by Mr. Compass. Second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, that brings us to board attorney. All right, we're the board attorney.
You're next.
Oh, okay. You're next. Yeah, we got through a lot.
Right, okay. Okay, okay, all right. Okay, I wanted to, the interlocal between Moss Point and Jackson County, Mr. Bossarge said someone's on their way to address that, so let me kind of bump that just a bit. I did want to discuss the election commission vacancies, my understanding that there are a couple vacancies. Nobody ran in a couple of the districts. Am I right on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, there's a statute that, that provides that 2315-839, that in the event no person qualifies by 5:00 p.m., 60 days before the date of election, the election commissioner shall certify that fact to the board supervisors, who shall dispense with the election and fill the vacancy by appointment. So I think, long and short, is the board supervisors has the authority to appoint someone to those positions. And the clerk, Mr. Eldred, shall certify the appointments to the secretary of state, and then the appointed persons shall be commissioned by the governor. So it's going to be this board's responsibility to fill those two positions on the election commission.
And then that'll be followed with, on the next ballot, they'll be on that, the next November ballot?
No, as I read this, these appointments, let me read a little bit more. I asked April to pull this statute. I'm not sure if it'll be on the next ballot, or if that's for a four-year term.
Because we've appointed election commission, but it's always, but it's always been a vacancy that occurred during a term, so it's different.
This is a little bit different. This is a little bit different, because there is a statute that deals with vacancies. This is a statute that specifically deals with nobody running for that position. And it seems to be, I'll double check that, it seems to me the appointment shall be made by the board, and that person shall serve the full term.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Have staggered terms, isn't that correct, Jimmy? I believe two of them run one year, and three run the next year or something. I believe it's a staggered term.
Yeah, I don't know. If, if the board can maybe give me an idea as to when we may, y'all may be looking at appointing somebody. In the meantime, I'll make sure that I've got everything right from a legal standpoint.
Are the cities going to ask us to help with their elections next year?
I believe, they usually do.
So that means we need to have it done before, they need to be on board, so they can help with that. And that'll be coming up, what, April, April, May?
I believe the current terms expire at the end of this calendar year, so you all would need to appoint someone to begin, you know, at the first of the year.
January 3rd.
Yeah, I believe that's correct, and Jimmy can verify that, but. Vacancies are District One and Five?
All right.
Okay, the, the other thing that I had was a resolution approving the interlocal cooperation agreement between Moss Point and Jackson County regarding the contract for solid waste services. And I put this under regular session, just to discuss it for a brief minute. If y'all will recall, we went through the, the process of selecting a solid waste provider, and the board voted to go with waste management. We put this out, put the proposals out in such a way that the municipalities could join this contract, if they so chose to do so. Goche and Ocean Springs have chosen, as I understand, not to join the contract. Moss Point has chosen to join the contract, and the, I think they have selected rubbish service, and they have selected garbage service, not recycling. And maybe they have prices for roll-off containers and other, other things like that. So what we have to do, and Moss Point has approved the interlocal agreement, so we have to approve today the interlocal, and we'll send it up to the attorney general for approval, and then they'll be able to join in on our waste management contract at the prices that we negotiated. Now, I think, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but they'll be the prices that we originally agreed to, because there has not been a CPI increase.
That's right.
Or any other increase.
That's correct.
So they will join, and then there will be maybe an adjustment for us and for Moss Point come July 1. They'll just join into the contract, same terms, same conditions, same everything. And, and then they'll.
Right, and they're set up to, to deal with waste management directly, too. They will have a contract, I mean, they'll piggyback onto our contract, but it's up to them to coordinate everything with waste management. We're not taking on additional responsibility to manage the garbage contract, if you will. So, but it will give them the benefits of the lower rates that we receive, and I think, we think it'll be a good thing for the, for the city of Moss Point.
Sure.
And I believe their contract expires on, at the end of January, so they'd be starting, I think, February 1st on board with waste management.
So we have a resolution prepared for the board of supervisors approving the interlocal between Moss Point and Jackson County regarding the contract for solid waste.
So move. All right, I'll second.
We've got a motion by Mr. Morris, second by Mr. Compass. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, finance. Or did you have, that was it, wasn't it?
Was that it?
I'm sorry, yeah, that's it, that's it for me. I had another amendment under planning that we'll discuss in just a minute.
Okay. The first item I have is to order approving the claim socket.
So move.
We've got a motion by Mr. Compass, second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, second item I have is the resolution authorizing the interfront loans for fiscal year September 30th, 2025.
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Second by Mr. Bossarge. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the last item I have is the resolution authorizing operating transfers for fiscal year September 30th, 2025.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Morris.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Compass. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Human resources.
Morning. I don't know that there's any discussion. This is the pharmacy services agreement that we've talked about at the Ossium. I believe unless Jimmy has something he needs to discuss, this is just the, the written form of the agreement we've been discussing for a while with, with Verus.
I was going to say, if anybody ever wants to know how complicated the pharmacy benefits world is, read this contract. It is, it is, it is a complicated operation. But we finally got it, we finally got it done with the help of outside counsel specializes in that. There were a number of changes that were made. This has been going on for a couple of months, a number of changes, and I think Verus RX agreed to the changes that Phelps Dunbar had, attorney, had recommended and suggested, and we're all okay with the agreement, and we've got a signed agreement now substituted in the, in the minutes that just needs to be approved.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the agreement?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Compass.
Second.
Second by Mr. Taylor. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thanks. Inventory control.
Good morning. I have a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental sale of a rescue truck, boat, motor, and trailer to the city of Moss Point.
I'll make the motion.
All right, we've got a motion by Mr. Morris.
Second.
Second by Mr. Taylor. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, all right. Emergency services.
Well, I'm not going to ask for anything, so we're just going to kind of update y'all on where we stand. Randy, you laugh at me like I'm crazy.
You already asked.
I know, I don't need to ask for anything right now. We're moving forward with the new fire station on Saracena. The slab's been poured. The metal's supposed to be delivered within the next two weeks. Once we get that done and that station up and operational, we'll close the netback station that the volunteers have been using. So we'll back that station out of there. I've been working with Matt, and Matt's been helping me a lot. We've got a, a number of projects going on, on rehabbing older fire stations and doing some construction work. We've had to get a structural engineer to look at one of the stations, and I guess we're still waiting on him to get back with us.
Yeah, I gave him the notes that you and I met with last, and yeah, hopefully within a week or two, we'll get a green license plate to get started on it. So yeah, it'll probably be closer to springtime next year before we get the project rolling.
Yeah, that's a station on the west end of Jim Ramsey, where they took the two metal buildings for some odd off a reason and married them together, and the roof leaks. We're going to have to do a special membrane, and that, like, what we decided on that to stop the leak. But we're rescanning a couple of the older stations, got some drive work to do at a number of the stations. We're going to be looking at, once East Jackson Fire, the volunteer departments turn their fire stations over to us, that's going to be some major work's got to be done to those stations, probably going to have to rebuild two of them. They were built with donated materials, and the stations are just not adequate anymore. We're probably looking at a three, four, five-year project to get all this stuff done, but that's kind of where we are.
Hey, Earl, let me ask you a question. So I've got a friend of mine that called me last week on the north end of Old River Road. Apparently his fire rate, his fire insurance went up because we don't have a man stationed up that way anywhere. Are we in the process of maybe doing something? Because if his went up, I'm sure the other ones.
We have a station on River Road.
Right.
And his insurance should not have gone up, because we don't have a man stationed. Closest one to him, probably, Waltman.
Right.
That one's manned, ballpark's manned, and that whole area has one fire rating.
Right.
So he probably, if I was him, I would call the state rate bureau, get them, get him, and have them talk to his insurance company. Because I wouldn't say insurance companies play with numbers, but my insurance went up.
The explanation on his policy was there's not a manned fire station within so many miles of his residence.
And that's not how this works, because we've got volunteers throughout the area, so that counts as the man. The next thing they'll tell him is he don't have a fire hydrant.
Probably so, yeah, probably so. I was just checking him out, I told him.
Yeah, but just tell him to call the state rate bureau. We can give him the number of the office to call.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, Jim? All right.
Thanks, Earl. Thank you, Earl.
I just want to take a moment to discuss expanding our lease at the golf course to the parcel, the 27-acre parcel right there between the Roy Crane complex and the golf course. This would allow us for, you know, if, in the future, of moving a maintenance facility in that area. And also, there has been some discussion of potential funding coming through some sources to build a driving range out there for the junior program in that area. As you see on the next page there, that's kind of how the layout would be. Right now, the, the junior program has well north of 125 to 150 kids in it. All the high schools are used the facility, so the driving range we have is very inadequate to meet the needs of both the general play and the junior play that's happening. So we would like to, we've discussed this with the school, David Baggett, the senior tenant, he's good with it, and just to go forward with the steps to add it to the lease, I guess. The only thing Mr. Baggett asked was, do we want to lease it all?
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, he did. It's a, I don't know, I mean, behind that, after the 27 acres, that other 90 acres is typically more wetland area. I don't think we'd have much use for it, but the 27, we would definitely have a use for it there. He did say that they would clear the timber on the areas we needed to clear it out as well, so. And Mr. Barry's sitting down at meeting with me as well the other day.
If we ever need that 90, I'm mad you'd still be there.
Yeah, I think it will definitely still be there. It's a low, that's, that's the low area on that area. Like, if it rains four to six inches tomorrow, it'll probably be all underwater down in that 90-acre spot, so.
Yeah. Watch the process. It has to go.
So now I'll let them know that we're ready to proceed, and they'll go to their board, and they'll get it surveyed, and send us a lease agreement back, I'm correct, and then you guys approve that request.
Their process, really, I mean, we got a request, you know, to, to lease the property. I believe they have to have an appraisal done of some sort.
And that's all on them.
And they may have to evaluate the timber that's on there, too, so. But we just need to, to make the request to, to go forward with the lease, and then let them run their process and give us, give us a price back.
You know, I don't know if any of y'all have gone up there and looked at this, but I think it's a very worthwhile effort. I know that used golf program, it's taken off, and it's just, it's running wide open.
It's wide open.
It is.
Every day.
It's amazing how good it's doing. It really is.
What was the championship, didn't we host one of the?
We hosted the 5A girls championship a few weeks ago, and it was, you know, it was a great, a great event. You know, I think her East Central lost by maybe two to Corinth. It was a very good tournament. Well, the course was well received, got good reviews. Richie didn't, did a good job in shape for the championship, so.
And these kids are from several different schools, aren't they?
Everybody, every school uses the course in some, in some fashion, you know, all across the county. You know, it's, it's getting utilized a lot. The junior program has kids from, you know, they're coming out of West Mobile, they're coming from, you know, across the county, Harrison County. I mean, because really, you know, right now, you have the, have our junior program, you have one maybe at Sunkiss, and the next one's over at Diamond Head on the other side of the coast, because, you know, junior golf is just in an odd spot. You know, everybody wants a junior out there, but they don't want them in the way, so when you're playing golf, so. There's a couple of courses that do fool with it, but, you know, but, but we're one of the larger ones. And Jeff Walker has done a really good job up there. Him and Richie have done a really good job of fostering that. And, you know, the courses, from someone who played, it's a fun course for juniors to learn to play on. But the thing is, in the afternoons, they get out there, you know, they're, they're on the range, they're working on their game. And when you put 100 kids on the driving range we have right now, it is slammed. There's golf balls flying all over the place. This will allow us to build something that's more spaced out, safer, and that would be really the only ones that would be mainly utilizing that, would be that program. Unless we have a large event, if we had a large event that, you know, maybe a four ball or something like that, then we would use that range for, you know, something like that. But it would be mainly just for the juniors and the high schools to use.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's a great idea for the board to go along. I think it'd be real good for the county.
All right, and so we don't, we don't need to take action officially today, you just need to know to go forward, and then when you bring back the lease back, we'll, we'll accept it.
We don't need a motion, or do we?
I mean, you can take one. I mean, it doesn't hurt to take one, to pursue the lease agreement with Jackson County.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion by Mr. Compass. Second by Mr. Bossarge. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And I have a quick question. You remember, we talked about the Inner Harbor Park and that, that potential layout of that tennis pickleball facility?
Yep.
I've shared that with a couple of folks at the city, but let's touch base and make sure that they all have an awareness of, of that potential layout. I just don't want to see them move down a road and have something done and come back and say, why didn't we do this? I just want to make sure everybody knows it. At the end of this, though, whatever their parks and recs thinks is best for that facility is what we're, we, we agreed with the MOU for them to manage that facility.
Yeah.
So that's fine, whatever they decide, but I want them to at least see that we got an option here.
Okay, that's fine.
We did look at some parking down there, too. I don't know if that's included in the layout.
That is not. I mean, that was part of the pier, what you were talking about on the bottom down there.
Yeah, yeah, there's been some talk about whether we wanted to expand the harbor over there along where that pier area is. And I, and I don't know if that makes 100% sense to do that, but, but there is an opportunity to do some lower-level parking down there that might support, you know, additional pickleball or just parking for the park.
Is, is the end game to, for more courts or to leave a tennis court for the city? What are they, what are they, what are they hearing?
You get across, really. They don't all say, they're not all saying, I think they passed two resolutions that day, and they were both unanimous.
Yeah.
But, uh. Me personally, if I was on their board, I would be thinking of, let's try to, there are people that live right in that area that play tennis, and they walk across the street, and a lot of them moved there. That was an impact of why they bought that house versus another house. So to me, it's the only right thing to do, to try to see if we can leave a tennis court. And accommodate the pickleball as well. So that, the, the layout that you sent to me, the last one, me personally, I like that layout.
Yeah, it would just be, you know, there would be some things that would, moving trees, rerouting sidewalks, things like that would be some stuff that would be, that would come up in that, with, with that, but I mean.
And I don't know that we necessarily even need, unless they expand and do an expansion on the harbor, I don't know that we need to even worry about additional parking, because that park is a park that lends itself to golf carts, walking.
Yeah.
Bicycling there. I mean, it's not necessarily a place where we want people driving from 30 miles away to come play pickleball there.
Yeah.
We want neighborhood folks playing there, and, you know, if someone comes from somewhere over 20 miles away, that's fine, but we don't need to build a parking lot to accommodate that.
Yeah, okay. We can look at it.
All right, so that. All right, you want to do the planning?
Yeah, let's see, let's see, it won't take just a minute on this planning issue. This is the amendment to add for planning the Greater Gulf Development matter.
Yeah, as y'all well know, the last board meeting, Mr. Bossarge asked for us to stop Greater Gulf from doing other work in the county until they took care of the issues at Cypress Way. And from what I understand, I spoke to the road manager Friday, and the engineer, our engineer, consulting engineer, and I believe everything's been taken care of. And I, I think we want to do a resolution for them to go back to work.
Actually, what Marcus did give me a call on Friday, we had entered an order after the last board meeting, rather detailed order, the stock work order for Greater Gulf Development. And Marcus called me, and I think you talked to Joe O'Neil, the engineer, somebody had asked Mr. Bossarge if he was okay with it, and I was okay with it, and I suggested, let's go ahead and lift it as of Friday. So what we would actually probably need is a, is a motion, and we'll prepare an order, a motion ratifying the lifting of the stock work order by the planning department this past Friday.
Yeah, I wrote out there Friday, and they're, they're substantially complete, so.
Yeah, now D L Horton still has some work to do. They've got some side work, work to do. They were scheduled to start that today, so they'd be done by Friday, depending on the rain.
Right.
This, this week.
That's what I was going to ask you. You, you did touch base with D L Horton, and they're going to get theirs done ASAP?
Yes, sir, I did.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to go ahead and lift the stock work order on Greater Gulf Development, you know, on their other projects, and let them get back to work. But I told y'all this would work, so it worked, so we got it done.
Oh, it worked.
Been waiting two years to get it done, so, but I made that motion. I'll second.
All right, motion by Mr. Bossarge, second by Mr. Compass. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all.
I just wished I could do this to Greater Gulf, I mean, Great River Utility, but I ain't got nothing I can do with them.
So that brings us to Mississippi State Extinction Services. Are y'all here?
Good morning. All right, good morning, everyone. Thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to come up to you today to tell you all our 2024 accomplishments. This year's theme is shining clovers. We are still fully staffed, as you can see. Our programmatic focus still lies in the areas of youth development, agriculture, natural resources, family consumer science, nutrition, and health and wellness. As you can see, our Jackson County 4-H babies. All right, so for our youth leadership, our accomplishments this year, we had nine members to compete in the 4-H shooting sports program. We also had one to qualify for the 2024 state invitational. His name is Glendon Henderson. We also had one to qualify for the 2024 State Invitational. His name is Glendon Henderson. We, they are only selected out of the state, five representatives out of the state to go, and he is one to represent Jackson County. He competed in the twenty, in the twenty-two rifle, and as I mentioned before, he will compete in the 2025 National Four H Shooting Sports at Grand Island, Nebraska. Currently, we have twenty-three active four H volunteers, certified volunteers. In 2022, we only had seven. So we are growing. This past, last past week, we had our first Invitational Shooting Sports Meeting, and we had over sixty families to participate. And I will mention that our shooting sports program is one of our fastest growing programs in our four H program, along with our livestock program. I will turn it over to our livestock agent.
Good morning. So our, both our horse club, our Ropes and Rains, and our livestock club, both are growing immensely. Going into this year, we were around five to seven Ropes and Rains members because we had so many age out. We did a kickoff meeting back in August and we have gotten back up to about our ten to twelve range, which is really good. We pull actually from Mobile County, a good many kids come from there, as well as the Van Cleve area. We're heavily in that area as well. But our livestock group is, again, as Kim said, one of our fast growing sides that I handle. We were go, when I started in twenty-two, we were around five members. We are up to twelve members now. At this past county fair, we had around thirty-eight actual exhibit, animals compete in the livestock show. We brought back our livestock auction as well, which was a great success. In that auction, we had eight steers, four goats, and four pigs. And I should have additional information on that in a little bit.
All right, so we have been able to reach out to over six thousand client contact, four H programming for the 2024. Our numbers have doubled. We have two hundred and fifty current active four Hers in our program. We have thirteen active four H clubs in our program. Since 2022, we have doubled our Facebook following to five hundred and sixty-eight. Also this year, our Jackson County Shooting Sports Program received the MDWFP Youth Participation Initiative Grant Recipient, and they received over fifteen hundred dollars to be able to provide more programming and materials for those kids in that program. Also, our kayak program, I guess I mentioned before, we have the only four H kayaks certified program on the coast here in Jackson County. And they also received a grant from the Omega Print, Omega Protein Grant. They received over a thousand dollars for the materials for that programming as well. As I've mentioned before, our Jackson County Shooting Sports Program and our livestock program are our fastest growing programs in Jackson County four H youth.
So as I said, we brought back the auction this year at our county fair. Through sponsorships and through our auction, we raised around forty-five thousand dollars with the sale of those animals, with probably an additional ten thousand in sponsorships from local businesses here in Jackson County. We advertise those businesses across the state. When we go to our state fair, we'll do, we'll go to District in January and Dixie National and Jackson again in February. So we are advert, advertising our local businesses even onto, on a state level. Our master gardeners are continuing to be active among the, the county. We have over twenty-five active members. We are bringing on ten new interns that will be finishing up at the end of this month. We had six of our ten from last year have currently already certified early. They have till the end of the year to finish their certification, but they have already certified. They have had about thirty-four hundred contacts across the county. They do fresh market almost every month. That it's available out there, educate, educating members of the community. And they do over sixteen hundred hours of service. And again, they do not finish their reporting system till the end of December. So that's just currently where we're sitting at in their service hours. Our Cattlemen's Association that we share jointly with George County has over a total of fifty members. We will actually, I did not change that. We actually had to bump that Beef Quality Assurance Program, which teaches cattlemen how to properly vaccinate and keep up the health of their herd. We're bumping that to December. Lou Stell Stockyard will be sponsoring us and our members will be attending that. I have reached out to around thirty-two, eighty-two hundred clientele, both through broadcast, on newsletters, as well as, I still do client visits. I was out on Friday at multiple visits. So I'm, I'm con, I'm constantly in contact with people throughout the community, answering their questions. I have gotten into the school system, so we have actually created some school four H clubs among that. I participate with a wings program at Van Cleve Lower Elementary, and then we have plans to hold an ag camp during some of the intercessions and the spring breaks in around March and April to try to increase agriculture and, and growing crops. That's kind of where we do not see as much of an increase. I'm having, struggling to get kids interested in an actual gardening side. So I'm trying to start them young so that they know when they're adults coming back to me, when I'm giving them information, hopefully they'll have a little basis as to what, what they're doing.
Good morning. I guess I'm the senior of the group. I'm getting ready to start my thirty-first year in extension and my thirteenth year here in Jackson County. And I actually, I really love what I do. That's why I've been doing it so long. And being back here at home makes it even greater to be able to do the work that I do. So as you can see, my numbers have grown from about fifteen hundred to over six thousand contacts this year, and mainly because of my work that I do with emergency preparedness with our young people from second grade all the way to about fifth grade. And I go into the schools and I teach them, we have two programs, one called the Pillowcase Project, where the students get a pillowcase that teaches them the type of things that they need to take with them if they are in emergency. We also talk about fire safety and that they don't take their pillowcase, they don't have to take it in a fire, they need to leave it. But we also have another one that's for, called Prepare with Pedro, and that's our second graders. And we teach them how to prepare for hurricanes. It's the main thing that I focus on because of where we live. As a matter of fact, for this year, I did receive an award through the Mississippi Extension Association of Family and Consumer Sciences for my work in emergency preparedness. I also do a lot of works with the high schools on Welcome to the Real World, which is a great, great program. I would invite any of you at any time to come out to some of our Welcome to the Real World. It's really, really a good program. The kids do not understand what us as parents do for them until after they finish this program, because they have to go through about thirteen stations and they have to purchase a home, rent a home, buy a car, pay bills, pretty much. And so it's, it's a really, really strong program that I've been doing in the high schools here in Jackson County. I still have my M H V clubs, and Mr. Bossarge, I want to thank you personally for coming out to our area meetings and speaking so well, and as well as Mr. Morris has been to my area meetings to speak to my ladies whenever we have all of the three counties together. I do offer staff professional development to our daycare providers. They have to get so many professional development hours in a year to maintain their certificate as a daycare provider. And so I'm offering that. I also have a one four H club that I do, and it's called the DIY Craft Club. We meet once a month. And I'm teaching the young people how to do crafts, how to do simple sewing. This year, we're going to go into teaching them a little bit on how to quilt. So, but that's basically what I have done. And as you can see in there, what the volunteer hours from my M H V clubs bring to the table as far as in-kind support. Now, our clubs are falling off and we, I'm working with one club, Blooming McNoyes, which is my largest club in Moss Point, to try to increase our, our participants. And it's, it's really because a lot of my ladies have gotten older and they just, they just can't come out anymore. But we want to maintain our clubs, so hopefully over the next year, we will maybe start a new club or at least add to the clubs that we have.
All right, and so you can see the, our extension partnerships listed below. And of course, we have more from our livestock auction. Shelby forgot to mention, we did have a dinner for our, we'll have to come in.
Yes, so we had a buyer's banquet held the following Saturday after our auction. And we had a great turnout, both from our sponsors as well as our buyers. We had Vice Construction Company, the Railroad Company, Farm Bureau Board was there. So we had a lot of representation, both from our sponsors, as well as those that either purchased animals or helped add on. We did have add on participants, both Soil and Water Conservation, the Farm Bureau. They all added on to those young people, either they're as an exhibitor or on their auction animal. We actually had over thirty people registered to purchase as well. We were really concerned about having buyers come out, especially starting it back, but we were very pleased to have over thirty people to register with us.
All right, so as you all can see, we are growing. We're, I'm about to start, Shelby and I are about to start our third full year at four H, and we are super excited about the growth of our program. We cannot thank you all enough for your continued support. If, you know, our colors are green and white, and green represents growth, and if we could paint the streets green to our office to signify and symbolize all youth in Jackson County to come in just and participate and join four H, we would. So we would love, we have our awards program tomorrow night for our four Hers. So if you are available, I know it's going to be raining and pouring down, but if you're out and available, at five thirty at the Jackson County Civic Center tomorrow for our annual four H youth event awards program. But again, we can't thank you all enough and appreciate you, appreciate you all for your support.
Also, the gifts that you were left, in the boxes are actually, were donated by one of our four H parents who has her own personal business. She helped us out with that, and that is homemade from her dairy farm. So, one of our livestock participants.
Also, we did, I forgot to mention that, we did a lot of work with Crystal here. She can vouch for how much time I spent at the fair this year. I actually missed one of our major meetings on campus, because when they changed the date, I was like, well, I can't come. I said, that's the weekend fair. So they expect us to be there. So we, and I think it went relatively smooth. We had a lot of participants, but we do need to try to get more people to participate in the fair.
I can tell you, I always look forward to the homemaker's phone call to tell me when I need to be there. I always enjoy coming and spending a couple of hours with y'all, for sure, yep.
Yeah, and y'all, it sounds like y'all are doing a great job. And something you said earlier about, you know, teaching the kids functional things and things they need to be able to work, made me think of my nine-year-old and what he told me about two or three weeks ago. He said, Dad, I think I need to get paid something to clean things up around the house and cut the grass and do all this. I said, that's great. We'll do that and we'll make it a checking account and you can start paying rent and utilities too.
I have a fifteen-year-old that she thinks she's supposed to be paid too, so.
Thank y'all.
All right, thank you.
Thank y'all. All right, La Pointe Cribs?
So let's see if I can pull this up here. Let's do escape. Oh, I'm Jim Underwood. I'm here to, on behalf of the La Pointe Cribs Foundation, the people that administer y'all's, La Pointe Cribs House and Museum, I wanted to kind of come before you guys and just briefly give you an update on where we are with our addition, the interpretive center that we're trying to get off the ground. And we're currently pretty well along into the second phase of the, the addition to the existing museum. We have contracted with, we contracted with an architect, and he's in, we're into the second phase of this design. The funding for this, all this work has come from the leftover monies that were from the restoration work to the old house. It was about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Those are state monies that were allocated for that. But we're also approved for this project by NDAH. So the next phase is going to be the actual construction. I was just going to run through these real quick and show you kind of some of the slides. As you can see, there's been a fairly good bit of development. And I apologize, it's not particularly large, but these, this is what, and this is actually only a portion of what he's already generated, the architect. So we have, I think I pulled about, maybe about half of the slides out of this, maybe ten. So we're, we're pretty well along in designing the thing. Expect probably within the next couple of months to have the full package. And, and at that point, we'll be, we'll be looking at going to actual construction of it with approval of NDAH and you, and you guys as well. But again, we're, we're pretty well into the design piece of it. And that's pretty much it right there. But, so the next step, as I said, is going to be the construction of the facility. And that's going to be depending on significantly more funds than we've expended thus far. And we're going to be, we're actually looking for a Gulf Coast Restoration Fund grant. And I think to that end, we were going to ask you guys to sign a letter of support, right?
Right, yes. There is a, a letter there to support the La Pointe Cribs House in constructing their interpretive center as part of the GCRF. I know that they submitted this project for consideration for funding. And, and there's several stages that it has to go through with that committee. It did pass the first stage, but in the second stage, the vote was split and it didn't move on to the third phase. I don't think that precludes you from getting any funding during the legislative, legislative session. It just means that you have to lobby for those funds separately up there. And I think that's what the plan is, to try to do that.
Exactly.
As far as I understand, the interpretive center, and Jim, you can add to this, is, is going to be used for people that are, for space for children or people that come and visit the center to learn more about what the center is. And it can also be used for community events, like weddings or wedding reception, conferences and those, those kind of things out there. It's an addition to the existing museum that we have out there now. And I think it just, if you've been out there, the existing museum just looks kind of plain and like a building. And I think this really dresses it up and makes it a much nicer place to, to visit.
So, so the intent of this is, you know, for seventy, seventy-plus years, y'all, you know, the, the Jackson County has had the facility and it's been a, you know, a pretty vital part of the public life. There've been a multitude of, you know, public events on site, but they've never really had anywhere where you could get any more than a dozen people together in a room. So this is, you know, this is supposed to help, help, give us somewhere where we can get people together. We have field trips from the, from the elementary schools. We had the high school vote tech come out Friday. And, and it gives us somewhere where we can get them inside, you know, do a presentation, where we can actually do that. Plus, it's an opportunity for, you know, like when NDAH comes to the coast, they can do their meetings here. You can do other, other types of meetings there. We can, you know, rent it out for weddings or whatever, you know, or social events like that. So that's the intent. Plus, we have a lot of artifacts from, from this history of the museum that aren't on display, that need some additional space for displaying. And this would serve to give us somewhere to put those as well. So that's kind of what we're after. And so this year, we've continued to increase the visitor ship. We're about sixty-two percent out of state foreign countries and territories. Sixty-two percent of the visitors, which for the fiscal year was sixteen hundred and sixty people for this last fiscal year. We're seeing continued, I got a graph here real quick to show you. This is, I think from two thousand and sixteen till current, and that was, you know, we're continuing to see growth. The biggest jump was after we finally finished the restoration on the house, and that's made a big difference. And we, we get a lot of people from out of state, and it's, it's pretty, frankly, it's surprising to me. But, but it's, it's one of the few museums open to, to the public, seven days a week, almost all year round, except for the holidays. And it gives people who come into the, into the area something to, something, something to do. So, anyway, do y'all have any questions?
Are you still going to have your Christian program this year?
Are you still gonna have your Christmas program this year?
Pardon me?
You still gonna have your Christmas program this year?
Absolutely, I'm cooking beignets, too.
Alright.
That's the, that's the plan.
Well, I can tell you, this is one of the first times y'all have been here that Ms. Ford hadn't been here, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss her a lot. I'm gonna tell you.
Oh, man.
She's always been here for y'all, and, uh,
Liz was...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss her a lot, for sure.
I think the whole community is just, we're a total loss, 'cause Liz...
She was this project.
She was, she was. Liz was, no, she was fantastic. Um, sore to miss.
Been knowing her a long time, I'm, I'm gonna miss her.
Yeah, yeah, she was special.
So the, the request is just for a resolution in support of their GCRF application?
Make that motion. I second it.
We got a motion by Mr. Taylor, a second by Mr. Bossarge. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Alright, we got ten minutes before the first appeal. And, well, before the E-appeal. And then we got the witnesses back. Do we have an item that falls down, maybe action items or anything?
Can take action items, yep. Uh, I'll cover the state issues first. Um, the governor's office made a press release and an announcement last Wednesday that included a hundred-and-ten million dollars' worth of new projects or, or projects. Some of them were not exactly new, um, across the state for, primarily for economic development-type projects. And I'm, I wanted to announce that over twenty-two million of those projects are, go to direct projects in Jackson County. Uh, in addition to that, there's another three million dollars, uh, there for coastal projects that we should receive some, uh, funding off of that as well. Uh, just to highlight a couple of those, um, that you'll be familiar with. Restore Act, uh, funding, there was a project for Highway sixty-three and Escataba Gas Pipeline Installation. This is in Moss Point. I assume it will be a Moss Point project, one-point-six-five million dollars. And this will also benefit future development that needs natural gas at Trentlot Airport. So that's an important project for Moss Point, but also for our airport. Trentlot Airport will also receive one-point-one million dollars for the South Apron Project, which is a new project for the airport. Uh, it will promote more hangar development and, uh, interest there on the south side of the terminal facility. Uh, and then third, uh, which is the, one of the most significant ones on the list, is a four-point-four million dollar, uh, project to the Jackson County Port Authority for a bulkhead expansion. And this is one of the projects that we've been working with them closely on and trying to develop an MOU on, which we've still got some work to do. But this goes for the Signet Project, uh, to replace that bulkhead. It's about a nine mi, nine or ten million dollar project, and this will provide a good, a good bit of the funding for that. On the Gomez side, I saw there were a couple of projects there in Ocean Springs. One was for Washington Avenue and Front Beach Utility Improvements. I believe that's for the elevation of the road going down to the beach. And also a bulkhead for the, I assume this is for the Fayard property area. Um, there's a project in there for Goshay, Martin Bluff, and Hickory Hill Sewer Improvements. Um, a big project for, um, Jackson County Utility Authority, which would extend sewer along Potecole Bayou Road, uh, one-point-two million dollars there. Um, additional funding for SNPDD's initiative for the coast, Coastal Map Revision Project, which we've been working with them on. Uh, also, a couple of projects in Moss Point that I'm not real familiar with. Matthew probably is more than me. Uh, Riverfront Coastal River Protection, three-point-seven-five million in Moss Point. And also Stormwater Park, I believe we're, we've been helping with that, a hundred-and-eighteen thousand for that. Um, and also I saw there are some fixed lab equipment for Mississippi State University and, uh, to the tune of eight-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. And that's for their development at Sunplex that we've been working on. Uh, and then also another, uh, small amount of funding for Sue Ellen Gym Renovations in Moss Point. So, quite a long list of projects in Jackson County, uh, several of them that we've been advocating for and helping on. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that. I'll send this out to, to y'all, so you have a, an entire list. And then on the federal side, uh, we continue to work with Congressman Edelle's office uh, related to the flood risk rating two-point-oh for flood insurance. Uh, we worked on some questions for, uh, for them last week to ask FEMA on. And one of the responses that we got back was that some of the projects that we're doing, particularly one in Moss Point that we're working on now, that has a flood reduction component to it, can be added to the data set, which may affect, uh, flood insurance rates in those areas. So, I think we're getting some traction finally, and being able to see that some of our work that we're doing to reduce flooding in areas may contribute to, to lower rates. And so that's a big, big positive. We'll keep you up to date as, as we move further along down that road. And I think that's it. That is it, thank you.
Mr. Ford?
Alright. I know we didn't have any, uh, supervisor items and amendments to the agenda, but I'll go through the list, 'cause we've got five minutes right now. Mr. Cumbus?
I didn't have any.
Mr. Morris?
Yeah, everything.
Mr. Taylor?
No, sir.
I don't have any. Mr. Bossarge?
Yeah.
Alright. Addressed all of the election commission issues, except for what we've got to do as far as personnel, right, Mr. Comer?
Um, that is correct. We've got two items on executive session.
Alright, so we've got about four minutes until, so we can take a quick break till ten o'clock, four minutes.
Okay, uh, on September the eighteenth at the Planning Commission meeting, um, the Planning Commission heard the application of Anthony Vermillion for a special exception. Um, the request for, was for approximately, um, fourteen twelve-by-forty open storage spaces with water and electricity to store boats, um, or campers, room spaces, you know, on, on a vacant piece of property. The property's on C-one, Neighborhood Commercial, it's located at fifty-seven-twenty Washington Avenue. And this is just north of Mikey's on the Bayou. Uh, it's approximately two-point-three acres in size. It is in a special flood hazard area, has an eighteen-foot elevation requirement right there. The Planning Commission recommended approval because of the flood restrictions. Um, and this development would be an open-air development, so it wouldn't, wouldn't be subject to flood regulations. Uh, we had one person that spoke in opposition of this, uh, and the Planning Commission voted to approve the application unanimously. Um, Judy Fern of thirteen-one-oh-four Win, uh, Winford Port, she filed the application for appeal. And she said that, uh, Taylor Olson was gonna show up and present the application, but I have not seen Mr. Olson this morning. So I don't know if there's a representative to, um, to, to submit this application.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and I, I'd gotten an email and a call from Ms. Fern and one other person. And, and it was probably, it's probably Taylor. Uh, those are the only two that I heard about this.
Yeah, uh, us also, and, uh, I know Ms., you know, Ms. Fern had an accident or something, she was in the hospital. So she wasn't a, able to come. Uh, Mr. Olson showed up at the Planning Commission meeting and spoke for her. And I spoke to him a couple of times since about this meeting. And, uh, he really didn't wanna do it, and, you know, Ms. Fern was kinda pressuring him to do it. But I do not see him here this, today to present the application.
When the absence of the person that appeals being here, are we even able to do a hearing?
Uh, they're the one that's supposed to present the hearing, so... I guess the board would have to make a decision.
I mean, so, so our option is either, is to, to approve it as it's been recommended by the Planning Commission?
It, it was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, but wasn't ratified because it was appealed, so...
It was appealed, so it wasn't put on the, on the, on the monthly report, okay?
That's correct, so you, y'all have to make some kind of decision today on that.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve what the Planning Commission's decision was.
We've got a second by Mr. Cumbus. All in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Alright, thank y'all. I think we've got another one.
Quickest one you ever had.
I know.
You didn't even have to type on it.
And it's, so, it's only four, it's fourteen spots. That, that, that lot is two-point-three acres. I wouldn't think that would be a big...
No, you wouldn't think so.
And when we, when we redo the highway through there, you're not gonna be able to just turn anywhere. You're gonna probably have to come south past it to the light and come back.
Come back.
So it's gonna eliminate any of that crossing over the highway.
There've been a lot of developments proposed for that area, and nothing's really passed.
Has worked in that area?
Usually, the neighborhood across the street shows up and grows against any development there. I was really surprised at the Planning Commission...
We're talking about fourteen spots, though. We're not talking about something, right, major. I mean, that's not that big.
I thought it was a good fit for the area.
Haven't got way to ten fifteen?
As I think, too, you know, it's crazy. Whenever you spread them out a little bit, you always end up with a gap. If you try to put them five minutes apart, we'll run an hour behind.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, that sounds like...
Crazy how they can sign the same thing.
Oh, right, yep.
And in some papers, you can sign all of them.
Yeah, sign all of them. Yeah. I do have this count before, I just couldn't remember where it was.
Counts as much as a person.
I don't really do one.
Signs of X, somebody got in their hand.
Yeah, that's right.
Which one is that?
Looks it, don't it?
See, they're in a flood zone. It falls under that fifty-fifty rule. The damages are way more than fifty percent.
Yeah, this ain't even close to fifty percent, is it, man? Okay. More, it's more like ninety-five. Yeah, no question about it.
Here's something I wanna talk about. This is an executive session, just to go, let's come to me.
This is pictures, which ones is pictures of?
That one is?
May Street?
Oh, okay. But we had started it quite a while back, trying to get it to this point.
You have to make an appointment for that?
Mm-hmm.
Is it you and Randy?
Yep.
It's y'all's election commissioners that would have to be...
Yeah, y'all need to put, put, make sure we get good ones in there.
Yeah, no.
Hey, man.
Expected now. Yeah, well, no, before.
Oh, okay.
Legislature hasn't, hasn't approved nothing yet. No, they, they keep, in fact, they usually don't even make it out of the committee. You know, every year for, shit, thirty years, I've worked for the county. It goes up there every year and they don't even make it out of committee. So it never makes it to the...
I know, we need, we need nice, we need fun, so I'm, you know, young age, I don't want to be fifty, fifty-five, forty, that they could maybe get in there with...
that they could maybe get in there with reason to get to deal with people.
Sure.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Eighty-two counties, there's only- there's only twelve top counties.
Yeah.
It won't- it won't tick.
Waiting on fifteen, yeah, I see you're still ten fourteen.
Man, we need this long minute when we're trying to get something done.
Yeah, I'm ready. This next one we have is at ten twenty May Street. Felicia Cannon is the property owner. The only address that we had for Ms. Cannon, you know, on the tax roll was this property, so we had nowhere else to send notices to her, but we did post a notice at the courthouse, we posted a notice on the property, we sent, of course, the certified mail to this property, we had no correspondence with the owner whatsoever. Of course, we're asking the board to, you know, clean this property up, as you can see, it's a- it's a menace, it's a burned house, it's been sitting there for quite some time. It's also located in a special flood hazard area, which I'm sure this property is below the required elevation, so it's way beyond fifty percent damage, so it would have to be elevated anyway, so this is- this house needs to be removed.
It looks like it.
And the taxes have been paid, they were paid this year.
Hmm.
How long since it's been burnt up like that?
Sir?
How long since this- how long has this been burnt up like?
I don't know exactly when it burned, but it's been sitting there for a long time. We've had the neighbors in the area call the- the-
I'm not mistaken, it's in a flood zone, and it won't meet the fifty-fifty rule either.
Oh, no, no, it's way beyond.
So, that's a common reason why it hasn't been-
Nothing they could do with it, other than demolish it, but we can't get them to do it, so we're asking the board to clean it up.
Were the taxes paid before it burned, or after?
Taxes were paid November fifteenth of this year.
No, they- that was-
Or had been paid up since November.
Hmm.
So, they're paid this year.
Okay.
I don't know the burn date.
Right, all right, so we don't have anyone here for it, do we have anybody here for tearing it down, or for removing it?
I don't know if anybody here that's-
No one for either side?
Okay.
Mr. Taylor's area, so I figured let him make the motion.
I will make a motion, we proceed.
I say.
Okay.
We've got a motion by Mr. Taylor, a second by Mr. Bossarge, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we got- might as well pull the next one up, it'll be about time. Van Eaton Circle, what's the time on this one? So is this the one-
That's a great idea.
Five.
Ten twenty.
There's a gentleman that calls every now and then, I think- This is on Van Eaton, basically runs the board, basically the board.
(inaudible)
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 Oh, okay.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Which is new, oh, July eleventh, July November, so this is the newest one.
Troy?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
(inaudible)
Yeah, that's what's happening. Look, it looks like they did that to pull ours out or something.
Yeah, I've been in some other places, but they did that, I don't know why they do that, but.
(inaudible)
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 Yeah, I guess, maybe that's what they do.
They had a building on Big Ridge, one of those commercial buildings, the homeless people took the screws out of the back of the metal building and tealed it back.
(laugh) I remember that. I guess you ain't got nothing to do, ain't got time to do it, don't you? I take these old children's wives.
In the dark, and there's nothing around, and no one can see.
Look how lucky you are, baby. Yeah, well, you do a better job of cleaning it.
All right, so is anybody here for this one? Okay, is that for or against? Against.
Against.
Okay.
Well, we- what do you mean against? We- we like, um-
I mean, for would mean gone, and against would be keeping it.
I have pictures, and I have statements.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Hang on, we got to start the process.
Yeah, we haven't started yet, but-
Well, when it rains, we're still smelling chemicals, and this is not- this is global.
Hold on, let us start the process.
Okay.
All right, all right.
Okay. The next one we have is at fifteen seven oh four Van Eaton, the owner is Ton Ba Lao. The address we have for them is in San Jose, California, and we have had correspondence with her back and forth, she had this as a rental property, and we've had numerous, numerous complaints on this property. Of course, every time we've visited- visited the property, there's probably been ten, twelve people in the house, you know, more than likely, I'm sure it was some kind of a drug house. But she finally got all the people out of the house, and recently put a new roof on the house, since she found out that we were going through this process. Now, she did not pull a permit for it, and it was not inspected, but we cannot get her to move whatsoever. She was recently in Jackson County because our code enforcement officer saw her picture on the ADC inmate thing, so she was picked up for something, some kind of restraining order violation or something, but we can't do her- get her to do anything on this house whatsoever. And she knew that we were having a hearing today, we've talked to her since, and I don't know if she's incarcerated or what, but she's not here.
Okay, so is there anybody here for not tearing the house down? All right, well, I guess we'll go ahead and hear some folks that are for tearing it down.
I will say that, you know, structurally, on the outside, the house looks like it could be repaired, inside, there's a, you know, it's pretty extensive.
It looks like there's some places where wires have been ripped out of walls-
Oh, yes, it's pretty extensive on the inside.
And there's no telling what kind of damage was done by that, I mean, that could be fire issues and a lot of things.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, but there's no power on the house, but it's just in bad shape, and I hate it for the neighbors, she's not going to fix it, she's not going to do anything with it, and more than likely, you know, there'll be some kind of vagrants or something occupying it before too long, so.
Of course, it's going to happen.
It's an easy vote for me right now.
What is it?
Yeah.
Do you guys want to hear stories, or just want to tear it down?
I mean, I- I-
Does that come up?
Yeah, well, I mean, one of y'all, if y'all are basically got the same theme, it should be fine. Is this- is this a half of a barrel?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. My name is Bready Hellickson, I reside at fifteen seven oh eight Van Eaton Circle. The owner is my mother-in-law, who's in attendance, and that's my wife, and the woman is a neighbor that lives on the other side of the property. I've been in this address for two years, the neighbor's been there since the early nineties, and this home has been in the family since the sixties. It's a beautiful home, it's a shame what happened to it. I know for a fact that there was methamphetamine manufacturing happening, and the back shed that they were living in for a long period of time, at least since I was living there before they vacated the premises. There aren't doors, there are definitely animals living there. The last time we saw the woman that was supposed to be cleaning the property, she had hired some workers to clean the rest of the backyard, they refused to continue working, saying that it was the worst they'd ever seen cleaning a house, and she screamed at them as they left. That is not a new roof, that is new shingles, that roof has been destroyed since Katrina. It is one of the most stressful experiences of my life, and I've lived in bad neighborhoods all over the country. This needs to go, it's a problem for the community. That's all I have to say, unless the neighbor wants to say anything else, yeah. Oh, yeah, she's got pictures and everything. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Come on.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Okay, Tammy McMillan, fifteen seven hundred Van Eaton Circle. All right, I bought my house in ninety-one, it was a wonderful street to live on until Katrina, when everybody started buying up houses for Section Eight, okay? It's ruined our neighborhood, but this woman has came in and ruined our street. Not only they were cooking meth, they would come in in the mornings after being out all night, stealing copper and melting it down, even during the fire restriction last summer. I have remade- I have called and called and called, can't get anybody to do anything. I did have one Jackson County investigator tell me they were watching them because of the meth. I couldn't even sit on my deck in the mornings when I put my dog out, have my coffee, because of the chemical smells. And when it rains, it is- you can still smell the strong odor of chemicals. Now, this area we live in, the water backs up and it runs all over, it is affecting the whole area around this place. There's homeless people going in this house, this- and if you go check that roof, it's cosmetic, new shingles, it's now- she never fixes anything, this woman will not buy a washer for a faucet. She is a greedy slumlord. She puts people in there that cannot pass a- a background check or an application to get into a decent place. She moves- she's- these last people, the toilets weren't working, on garbage morning, you could smell raw sewage coming from their garbage cans. They put up shanties in the backyard and were renting them out to druggies, lean-tos. I have- and as far as chemicals go, I have called, every time somebody suggested me call somewhere, I call them, oh, well, this is not the right department. In the meantime, like I said, these chemicals are going all over the neighborhood. We want this place tore down. There was a point, these last people that are there, they give white trash a bad name, okay? That- I'm not politically correct, and I'm not going to be, so if you don't want me to talk to them, go sit down, but I have a mouthful. I've been there since ninety-one, and I paid for my house. This woman is deplorable. I worked for the city of Biloxi for twenty-eight-plus years, police department in the Biloxi Municipal Court. I talked to our code enforcement, because she would never fix anything, and then it would go criminal. When I left my job, retired, she owed the city of Biloxi thirty thousand dollars in code enforcement fines, and you know what it takes, that you get extension, extension, she will not fix anything. It's not livable, I don't think you could get roaches to live in this place, it's gotten so bad, the- just the odor coming from it. And we- it is sandwiched in between my house and this gentleman's house, and it's disgusting. There's a point where I couldn't have gave my house away, much less sell it, it has depreciated our property. We want this gone, and if I wouldn't have to go to jail for it, I'd burn it down. That's how ticked off I am, and like I said, I've been there since ninety-one, this is absolutely deplorable. None of you would stand for this and live next door to this, we want it gone, and somebody better do something, because the next- my next stop is the media. This is disgusting, and just to let you know, the little sign that was put up in the yard about this hearing, it's laying in the- behind the hedges in the yard, she wouldn't even let the sign- y'all signs sit up. And this stuff about California, I know for a fact that every time she tells y'all she's in California, she's lying, she is here. She has a six hundred thousand dollar house not far from where we live. She is a liar, she will look at- she went to City of Biloxi council meeting and fell out on the floor having a fit, she got between a bulldozer, and she was arrested for disorderly conduct when they tried to bulldoze her property on Forest Avenue after numerous years of trying to deal with her. She is not going to do anything. Something has got to be done. I know this is not a rich neighborhood, but it was decent, working-class people, and it's affecting our lives. Those people were doing- two o'clock in- Those people were doing two o'clock in the morning, trash out there with their trucks that don't run, waking... No mufflers, waking people up in the middle of the night. No peace. I finally had enough and signed charges for disturbing the peace. It's just... They stole water from me. They couldn't even afford to turn the water on when they knew it.
We can look at the pictures and tell that we need it. And the electrical concerns and the roof concerns are enough structurally for me to think the house needs to go. So all the things about how the person is or any of that really doesn't matter based on this. This is enough.
Well, if you can get somebody out there to test the soil for the meth overflow, that ought to be enough right there. It's disgusting.
The pictures are enough.
Yeah, the pictures are enough.
Okay. Thank you for letting me speak my piece because as you can tell, I've had enough. It's been going on way too long. And I appreciate you actually letting me listen to me what I say. Thank you.
Thank you.
She made my job easy. I will say that, you know, this area, we have a ton of homeless people in this area. And we have to deal with that a lot, you know? And they move from house to house. And we have a bunch of properties like this. But our process, you know, I mean, we give them every opportunity to do the right thing. We send letters to them. We try to converse with them on the phone. We try to get them to do right. We try, you know, we take them to court. We'll do what we can before we get to this process. And when we get to this process, I mean, I don't want to tear anybody's house down, but, you know, if you can't get some kind of movement, can't get people to do something, this is our only alternative.
They're not leaving us any choice.
Right.
Marcus, would you say that every time we vote to do this, one or two more crop up?
Oh, absolutely.
By the end of the week?
We have a list.
A new one? A new case crops up?
I mean, we have a list this long of menaces that we need to do. And like you say, they, you know, steady progressing. Mr. Cumbers, you've been out with me.
Yeah, I have.
You know what we deal with, so...
Marcus, for what it's worth, I just looked up on Zillow and Redfin that address where you sent that letter for her.
Uh-huh.
That home in San Jose is estimated to be worth one point six million on both Zillow and Redfin for what that's worth.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to go ahead and move forward declaring the property a menace.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Bossarge. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Thank y'all.
Will you let her know what the next process is? About getting the bids and coming back to the board and all that stuff?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just let them know what the process is.
The next one that we have on the agenda, Nevada. We're actually pulling that one because they've cleaned that up since we've sent them notices out. So we don't need to have a hearing on that.
All right. I have rode by there lately, so all right.
Can I get a motion in an order just declaring that moved? Just so we'll have something in the minutes showing that that... And I'll prepare an order saying that it's been pulled because it's been cleaned. Just declaring it moved.
Do that today or do that in the next meeting?
We're ready to...
To make a motion to accept the withdrawal?
We're sending it, yeah.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Motion, yeah. Motion by Mr. Bossarge, second by Mr. Cumbers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.